Kevin Kingston, like sixty-five, seventy? A thousand.
Oh, I didn't think that would run around.
Yeah, I was like, there's.
I thought Kevin Kingston, he should be here, he should be more.
Probably.
But he was always from Beaver Valley.
Yeah, he was. Then he lived out there, by the farm, like, on the airport.
Oh, yeah. So then, Mrs. Kimberly was from all around there.
I don't have any idea.
She's a Kingston. Ron Kimberly's mom.
I don't know about that.
She might, I think she might be Kevin's brother sister.
She is. She is Kevin's sister. But I don't know, I mean, he would have been a grown man, well, now how old are you? Like, I said, like, six. I mean, he's probably older than Benji, right?
Yeah.
But like, not as old as mom.
Right.
So.
Wow. I thought you had a seven couple.
Probably.
He was, he was really practical, you know? He's got a suit.
So when I was little, when I was little, and, you know, we were just running around over there on the farm, Kevin Kingston.
In the shadows of the, of the earth.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thanks everyone for coming to the meeting. Okay, you guys got a chance to look at the minutes?
I make a motion, we accept that a minute per August.
Well, we don't get a change.
I did. Uh. Looked at the minutes and we found out.
We had, yeah, we had one interaction where the bridge work was repaired with four thousand PSI concrete.
Instead of four.
Instead of four hundred.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, if that is changed, how do we do that now? Once it's changed?
We accept it when the change.
Yeah, how about let's make a motion, we accept the minutes with the change and do that again?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes with a change of four thousand PSI concrete.
And I'll second it.
All of the members say aye?
Aye.
That's good. How about the bills list?
I'll try that again. I can imagine, and we accept that. A bill list and transfer any money needed to do so.
I'll second it.
All of the members say aye?
Aye.
These sets trust ballots for election of trustees, insurers, and, um, for. Yeah, we're gonna have, of course, Kim.
Um, every year they send us these ballots.
We don't know who they are.
Great.
And so we just, never really better one, don't we?
Right.
So, I'm the same way, I could be doing, I don't know, I'm just not up to it, I probably should be.
One person running, I can tell you that.
So, there's only one person running, so I think we just let it drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it's the same person as, um, forever.
Forever, yeah. Clearfield County Tax Change Notice of Exoneration Due to Representative's.
Depository sale.
Depository sale. It's out of sight on that one.
I don't know what a depository sale, what is that at, Gerald State?
Gerald State, can you tell us what a depository sale is?
Well, officially, as a tax collector, if you don't pay your taxes for a given amount of years, I think it's three years, they put that property into repository. Then they do private sales, or they do share sales, or they do judicial shi- shi- sales. I just bought a private sale, the building next to me, I own it now. Does, did that make sense? You have any question?
Well, what, now that's good enough for this, but now you've just got me curious. What rules it from a private sale to a share sale?
If nobody puts any bids on them, I put a bid on that property as a private sale. It takes three months, you have to advertise two months prior to the day that you put your bid in. If no one challenges it, then I could, I've bought the property for a thousand dollars. Now, we have to check the leads, because they can still be there. The tax name was forgiven, that was like thirteen thousand dollars.
And so, when it goes to the share sale?
Share sale, nobody wants it, nobody's doing anything with it, so they can sell it. But, they've been putting you, uh, into repository for some, and then it stays in there until either they do a share sale or they do a judicial sale. You like the judicial sale because it wipes everything out.
Right, the judicial sale, then you know you're buying it free and clear.
That's correct. Share sale, uh, you still may have the leads with it.
So, you have to be careful of those. Right. Let's, uh, so what about this, we got a notice saying what?
Just give me, just drop it in the box.
What, and has it been this property listed there?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's not even, it's, uh, somebody can promise what P A's.
No, the sales? Ten, so it's fifty percent. It doesn't already say where it's at. Looks like they have fifty percent interest, I mean, I'm sure. All right. Public comment.
I'll speak if nobody else does. Thank you for allowing Christian Press Production News Media to be here, and I want to especially thank your representative who was at the Coldport, collapse of the government, uh, but, and that you allowing your secretary to be there, and possibly, uh, I know a few of them would like her to be the receiver, it would be, um, she, I don't think she would charge us a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour like the receiver does, just to pay bills. We wouldn't even give her fifty dollars an hour. But I appreciate both of you being here and there, uh, at the meeting, and pray for our, our borough, we need a government.
Good.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Mark?
No, I don't know.
Brian? All right. New business, letter to I L A patching of holes.
Oh. They don't patch their holes in the road whenever they have a water leak. They do patch it, but they don't do it right. And one fellow, the water authority, the worker, said they want him to start using millings to fix these holes. So that's when I said we ought to send them a letter and tell them to do it right.
And, uh, cold patch for so long, or just two R C for so long and then patch?
Yeah.
Well, two R C for, till it gets stale, then add cold patch on it. Well, I asked her, does it get paid?
Really should be paid.
Really should be paid.
At some point, it needs to be paid.
But I would say cold patch before the snow flies. Before the, uh, before the plowing, because that one spot I know would tear, tear the plow if it wasn't fixed.
All right, well, can you guys, uh, well, you ready, Kim? Put the rate in the letter?
Do you have a cut ordinance? Where when somebody cuts and asks to be back according to your specifications?
I don't think there is an ordinance, but I think it's an unwritten rule that you have to put a redback of.
I know Pendel, uh, didn't like what they did over, there's a market, Market Street there. They dug it up, undermined it.
Oh.
And, uh, they came by and redid it.
The Carrington Township. An onset procedure, always struggle trying to figure out what words we want to use.
How about we encourage them?
I would encourage, what we say.
They got, they were, they were saying it was a original petition.
Right, well, you can't do that, because it's cut, we just have to let them know that we want it. Cold patch? Uh, I don't, I want to say that the Carrington Township's procedure for repairing a road after it's cut and dug up and repaired to fix their wa- to work on their water on it is two R C stone compacted for a couple of good weeks for rainfalls, water, that's what that's a. And at least cold patch, if they don't have time to pay the, for the winter maintenance season. And some time to be paid. You good?
I'm good.
Want to go, you give a letter to someone?
They get the point.
To this point. If there's any questions, they can call you on this.
Yeah.
Okay, daylighting roads, advertise if over twelve nine.
That was just a myth for us.
For us, okay. Fall cleanup, landfills open nine twenty-nine.
I meant, because, who was saying about the roads needing daylighted?
We didn't talk, remember, that was something we had got bid.
Yeah, like, say Jack, had to go on track, but nothing that would have done.
He started at one.
Yeah, he started there.
Didn't turn anything into it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, jeez. Yeah, he started down there, pie and run, and come up the hill towards, uh, Jack Farms.
And I know we've said this probably three or four times now, but he seemed to run into them more than any of us. Have you, you see what, by the way, speaking with the story is if we should advertise or if he thinks he can get it. I appreciate this, he's always been really a good fair price.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And I appreciate him doing it, so, really like to see him do it, I just.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll ask him, I'll see him. I'll, I'll briefly see him here.
Shortly, so. All right, the fall cleanup, landfills open nine twenty-nine to ten-six, not fall reserve. Collect Thursday, the second, take the landfill Friday, Thursday, so did we call the reserve?
I didn't tell, we didn't approve it.
We didn't approve it last meeting?
No, because we didn't have the information.
Okay. So, what's that sound like? Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
I think that should be fine.
So, we'll figure out fall cleanup on the, uh, second, and take it off through the third.
Tires this time.
A lot of tires this time?
Yeah.
Put a bunch of tires in that shed.
Well, if we have room, we should get a lot of them. Computers.
Oh, so I was having a lot of computer trouble today, which I ended up with a wind stream problem or a computer problem.
That's what a lot of it is.
Yeah. Anyway, it connects us, or what, wind, wind stream?
Yeah, so, yeah. About twenty times today, it tripped us all over the go.
So, anyway, I called Ryan, and he said, oh, well, what did you decide about the computers? And I said, we like them. And he said that our computers are, he thought he called all those townships. He didn't call us. Um, he said, because I complain the least. The Windows is not supporting, um, ten. Ten. No.
Eleven.
Uh, ten is what all the computers have, and Windows came out with eleven, and none of the computers will support the eleven.
Well, they all won't.
Yes, will support the Windows eleven. And he said, it just concerns him because the whole world knows that this is happening, and it's just, you know, like, a good time for somebody to be hacked or something, because.
Well, I'm terrible for, I'm all right, just a letter, uh, what are you?
Um, he seems to really feel strongly about it, for whatever reason.
Well, that's what he does.
Yeah, well, he said, he said, I believe that would make more money if I could just update your computers. But he said, I, you know.
Well, I'm not a good computer guy.
Well, the problem is, if she sends a file to somebody who has eleven, they won't be able to read it, because it'll be on ten.
Like, they're doing away, apparently, mid-October with, with Windows ten. It's like, not gonna.
They do it every, so.
Then this whole service.
Yeah, you won't be able to get upgrades on.
They just won't service it, they just still function. If you had a seven or eight, they would still be working right now. But, they just don't upgrade.
So what happens if you want to send it to someone that has an eleven?
It's not that much different, just the interface is different with the way it works. File management's still the same.
So, we can send those someone with eleven or not?
Eleven's more secure, that's what they, they have features with security. But your file server is still going to be the same. It's a little bit smoother, uh, interface.
I feel like he isn't somebody that would take advantage.
Right. I feel that too, but, you know, everyone, everyone.
What if they send somebody an eleven?
Who is ten, yeah.
But I mean, is ten able to open?
Yeah.
Right.
But if, if, if you're talking about programming, it may not be, like, you have Windows, Windows Outlook ten, and you're using the Word pro- product that's in that. It, it may be a little different, but, uh, I don't, you're not gonna have that much problem with it, from what you do, in my opinion.
Who's Ryan?
So.
So, yeah, that's nobody.
Yeah. He won't, he won't steer you wrong.
Well, he's highly suggested he get us that we should update. How old is that computer?
A computer's good for two years.
Three years.
Well, your one year old. Mine's probably ten years old. Well, did he give us any pricing?
He said that, like, a week ago, that ones he bought for Goldwick were around five hundred.
Oh, really? That's it? Well, I'm, I'm not to oppose to that. I was thinking five thousand.
Yeah.
We need it, hard to get it, though, if you want.
How many would you need? Just one?
Or two?
Two. Because it would have to be the laptop and the.
Me.
The desktop.
Well, I would like to have him give us a price on it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
We can't, can't make a motion, probably, till we know what they cost.
Right.
So, let's get a price on them.
Yeah.
And then we'll decide the next meeting if we're gonna get them.
Yeah, he's actually gonna come up here because of whatever's going on in there. Like, every time I try and get on the internet, it just completely knocks you off, and you have to start it.
Let me ask a really dumb question.
Okay.
Since we're a township. Would it, would it be terrible for us to not deal with Horizon and then go to Southern?
I don't have any idea.
My sister has.
That would be a question for you, I'm just thinking.
Well, I'm sorry, I put a couple. I don't, but I put them on people's houses for them, and they just love them.
Denise loves them, she has them.
Crazy, huh?
I have one on my phone.
On your phone?
Because you have it at your house?
No. Because I have a T-Mobile phone and a.
Oh, wow. T-Mobile is a lot like it, too.
I don't, I just know that if, every time I go down to my house and hear open the sky, I get a text saying, you're like the, Starlink.
Well, I just know there's been a lot of problems lately.
Yeah.
With the garage, some of it is. Have you, have you come and had them mirror your service?
Something.
I, I had one connection that was short, and it turned black, and that.
They just redid that on the computers.
Oh, did they?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, let's start, I guess, we're not worried about the startup together.
I mean, I could ask him, ask his opinion on that.
Ask him his opinion on that, and, uh, give us a price on the computers. And then we'll decide that next meeting.
That's a super good price.
Hmm?
That's a super good price. Is that, are they used or brand new?
New.
Yeah. I mean, uh, we want the price for the solid everything, but we're gonna have it. Okay. All right, old business. We have got to hire this up tonight, because I can pick these cameras over.
All right, I have the information.
Ryan's ready.
So, thanks for revering, the, uh, the wise, I think, is the best system to go in. It doesn't require a subscription, nothing. You get, uh, there's a bundle you can get on Amazon, or you get an Echo Five Show, it's like Alexa, but it has a screen. You can download this, the app for free through Kindle, which she already has an account. So, you can get three cameras, uh, the Echo Five Show, and any power cords with it, which is not solar, not battery, they give one thing.
Could I interrupt you there while I'm thinking? I hate to interrupt you. But, if the power goes out, do they have a battery backup?
No.
You can buy a battery backup.
I can look into that.
Oh, yeah, you can buy a battery backup that you plug, just like you have on my computer.
And it's only fifty or twenty minutes, usually. But, depending on how much you have on it. If twenty to thirty minutes, it's all it's good for.
I like the cord, but I, I would like to have, you know, the power is out, I don't wanna lose our cameras.
Well, three cameras and power cords and the Echo Five Show is a hundred and eighty-five dollars on Kindle.
So why don't we get six cameras?
You get as many as you want.
If we don't have them all, we'll put them all, what's two, what's four hundred dollars? I make a motion, that we do that, I'd make a motion, we order the cameras and try them for that much, we're not talking much money, you know? We don't like them, we'll do some.
Three or six?
I say six cameras.
They have a solid backup, it's a little panel that you can mount on the side of your building, and it will energize some unit of the power source.
If there's some.
If there's some.
Right, we need a battery.
Well, you can get ten to half a mark if there's battery.
I'm thinking, you can surely, you can figure that out. I mean, you're not even talking about, that we need a motion, really, we already have a motion department.
Yeah.
So, I guess, my vote is, I don't need a motion, my, my vote is, I say get six, and it's up to you guys, not you decide what your best, I don't know. It's all fun.
Yeah, we're gonna go to money, guys.
Yeah, mine'll have a couple of underdrawings, because they get their, uh, uh, let's catch them on a camera.
Yeah.
Now, they take, they take Wi-Fi, but those take Wi-Fi. So you're gonna have to have Wi-Fi service wherever you are.
Yeah, we have Wi-Fi here.
Yeah.
We're talking about if he wants the, view it on his phone.
Well, everybody can work, if you have a password, it's all beefy people, I want to know how to see the drugs.
He says the Wi-Fi work over there.
Well.
Thank you.
I can connect over there, as long as they're outside. The only one that would be in question would be on the backside, if you put any down there.
Isn't there a booster in cover or something that you can put there?
What do they call it? It's not a booster, it's a.
Okay. My vote's get these cameras here, we, we gotta get these cameras.
Here, so get them on the back.
And we're gonna have a, then we'll start seeing what we can do to tweak them. Because you're not getting that till you get them.
An extender, what you're talking about.
Yep, uh, we call them.
They call them repeaters.
Yeah.
What do I, what do I call them?
You can do all that unless it's out of them, and amp up everything.
Well, I, I vote we must get them ordered to six, and everything we need, get them up, see how they work, and then we can start tweaking. That's the way it is now, everyone has a camera.
They're tracing us now, they don't have a market.
That's right.
Right, yeah.
He said, he said, what, do it six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tell you, Brian, thank you, guys, we gotta do it, I don't care about, I mean, I do care about, because we, I'm, we're just putting it on. There's gonna be something else going on. Uh, something else, thank you, guys, I see a post in there, that's great.
How are you having this other door?
We did the, uh, signage, we removed the lights from down on fifty-three for the school sign.
Fifty-three or seven twenty-nine?
It was on fifty-three.
Really?
Yeah, right there in front of, uh, Pusey's Farm, on that curb, that's where they were talking about, they were, why they were saying up on seven twenty-nine it wasn't. But we removed it, we removed the lights and put up brand new signs in them, in them spots. That was what we skipped.
Yeah, awesome.
Last one.
Last one.
And the bridge signs are up, we got bridge signs up.
The old, all the lights are up in the garage.
Yeah, we put in any old shed.
School ones.
If they would want them back, the school or whatever, if they would want them.
They're not, they're junk.
They're pretty.
Yeah, they are.
They're, you just take them, they shouldn't.
They're plastic.
Yeah.
We didn't have to.
That's right. They're not ours.
They don't want them back, I want them, if they want them, they can take them. But, uh.
Yeah, we got that, uh,
that question. So, I'm going to Cindy Fitz.
Yes, put one on there.
She doesn't know what else to do with that.
So what'd she do?
She said to ask you if, why the license plate on that?
Because the insurance company said they want an insurance.
That's what I told her, I thought, and she.
You missed that.
Well, I thought I knew that, but, I said, I don't know if they're demanding that, I mean, we haven't talked. But she said, I don't know what else to do, like, it's not, they didn't say anything on there, they crossed off everything she's put on place now. It says right on that.
What was this for the loader?
Yeah, certificate of origin, says right on it, it's a loader and what it is, and. Hi, Ryan. Uh-huh.
So you want me to?
Yeah, we're here. Okay, thanks. He's not here. Um, she said she's in loss, she doesn't know why, when it says right on there what the piece of equipment is, and they say no such thing, and.
And you know what's wrong with it?
What's that, what else to do?
I have a lot of faith in her, she can't figure it out.
Right, and she took it to Dallas last time. Last time I took it down, she changed it, and she took it to Dallas, and had him take it down, and.
Well, we're just gonna let her ride with the vacuums and shores. She's, I tried to get the license plate one time for a trailer, and I could not get to. She said, "I tried to get the license plate one time for a trailer, and I could not get through." Transportation Department, transportation. And I got pulled over one time, and state police says, "Why, that's not, you don't have a license on this." So, I know, I explained to them how much I tried and what I went through, and they said, "Okay, they don't, you get the license first." Well, you get them, you get a license, you can't get a license.
And, like, but I'm with her. I mean, they wanted the late and weight and all that, and it was right on there.
Well, we're going to back up. If you want to give it to Dallas one more time.
But nothing has changed. There's nothing more she can change on it.
Maybe she needs, needs that, and then just maybe nobody will work.
And it's crossed out red.
Remind me to do.
But you said they did it manually?
Or is she trying to do it online?
No, she took it to Dallas to take down. It came back first time. We mailed it the first time. It came back, took it down. They say there's, there's such thing as a loader or whatever, even though it says right on, it's a certificate of origin. So, it's a cat loader, seven twenty-nine or something, whatever.
Or four.
Whatever it is, and it says no such...
Oh, the tobacco.
Thing is right.
Oh, the loader?
It's the loader.
Oh, nine thirty.
It says no such, whatever.
No way.
And it's all stapled together, where the face of it says, "What?"
Well, do you ever get an hour and a half or two here that you're...
Yeah, I can get down there. Do you want me to take it?
To Dallas and tell the lady exactly what you just said.
Okay.
And tell her why we need it. We know why we need it. And tell her to, uh...
You're going to put municipal plates up?
No, we put them on.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
So, maybe we have to switch out to just special model or something. That's what we need to do. A special model, what's, what's a special model?
Well, then, why don't they put a number that says?
They don't care.
You don't know that, I'm just saying, maybe.
And I see, I have one, I have one on my line.
I got one on my back, I showed you a model.
Yeah.
And I was told the same thing. If I don't have a license, I could be in a lot of trouble with that, right? Now... The agriculture, boy, they're all, they're different, you know, but all I need is a truck.
Great farm.
They're made, you know, a lot of others.
We'll just turn trying one.
It don't work, it's not a...
Do we want to get that tractor over to Mark'sburg or in the trailer sometime? Take it over. I'm going to take that, check it out.
Is it all done here?
No. Didn't you say Brian's on his way?
Brian.
Brian?
Yeah, he's coming to fix my computer. I mean, and then he can talk to us also, but...
Is there a good business part or was that public comment?
This is all business, but...
She said she can get a grant for a salt shed, but she needs dimensions.
No, I said I can go get a grant for a salt shed, so there can be a grant open.
Well, if we're going to go for a grant... Thank you. If we're going to go for a grant... We're going to do a forty by eighty.
I'd have to have a whole lot of information.
Yeah, well, you figure out what you want. Twenty feet high. And I want to put that sand in it. If we're going to get a grant, that's what I have to just follow off that, that twelve pound jet. Beautiful building.
Yeah.
And then we just take one corner and put some salt in it.
Right, and you probably put, like, a wooden barrier just to keep it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense.
What would this be made out of?
Sixty by eighty.
What would it be made out of?
It would be a pool building. There's a pile of information. If you just, you tell me what all you need, you get the application. And there's a grant out there. I don't want to give this card up, but don't ask me what I'm going to get too. This guy's been to our township a couple times. He just, he used to work for Joel Stevens Equipment. He's got a nice truck, a beautiful truck. He's got, uh, he got a nice shop. I believe it's Ashville address, but it's coupon. And he started his own, went into his own business two weeks ago. He's had it for two years.
Yeah, he's going to work them to look, you know.
Yeah.
Look.
And, uh, I was telling him about that old tractor.
Or did they?
And he said, "Well, he's, he'd not, he'd come down and take a look at it and see what we need." He said he's down here and he's, uh, starting his business. So, anybody like this guy too. He's got a, comes on, on the road and works on equipment and he's a pretty nice, energetic, ambitious young guy.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to him there.
Yeah, and I talked to a couple people that's been around him, and they've seen he's got some good rapport as far as things like he knows what's going on. Take a picture of that, yeah, let's see if that... If you want me to, I could call him. And if you, or if you want to haul it over and you feel better going over there, that's...
Oh, it don't matter to me if, if this fellow...
But I told him about the parts, and I thought, "Well, boy, he might do some homework" and be able to tell us, "Yeah, parts aren't available," or "Parts aren't, it might be better hauling it over if we hear that they're not available."
Right, thought the forty. And he said, "Definitely there is parts in there that aren't available."
New.
New. That's one guy.
I don't know, like, say that guy, what is he going to have, open it up? Take the top off, get his assessment and see what he thinks. Now, if this fellow wants to come down and open it up, uh, and look, and say, what do you think, see, you know?
If he thinks, if, like, say he must haul it somewhere, then how they going to get it?
I mean, if, if, if he said it's destroyed, well, then and there are nothing he can do, you know, if you can't get it stopped.
Richard up there, he's up there. He has some pictures of the transportation just a little apart.
Who, does he have a wife? Well, who? She would like him in here giving him a nice clean in, right?
Wife.
Yeah, so...
She left a business card here and a sheet of information and gave me to clean it.
He's those, he's, mostly got to those with townships who are working there, and he seems to he just did some for another township on a case and he said, "Well, you know, go to nice garage."
Oh, I seen, I seen that. I did a rent for on the case.
I think that's what he said, yeah.
He put the pinion in, pinion ringger chewed up.
Also, I did all those Sunday. Or, or, lover can't, can't put a roof on the rig on there.
That's pretty good as hell.
I haven't been a day of that, but, uh... But, uh, I'm going to give them a call, I guess, soon he's up. They don't hurt enough, they can tell, so he seems to be knowledgeable about tractors and whatnot.
Yeah, if he wants to open up, see what he wants to do.
Okay, so we're not waiting on Brian to talk to about this.
No, I mean, because he's not going to be able to tell us anything anyway right now. He's going to have to get us a price. He's just coming to fix the computer.
Right, okay, well, you're not waiting, we're not waiting for that. Is everyone done?
Yeah.
And, uh, make a motion, did you?
And make a motion, we need your...
I'll stick it.
Well, I was going to say, "Hi."
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Well, get them, if I see you want to get them cameras and start to see what we are...
Yeah, if you're trying to get...